Okay, well, why don't we start with, uh, why don't you tell us a little bit about your background and why you decided to run for school board and maybe some experiences or leadership opportunities you've had in the past that you think would serve you well in the role of school board member?
Okay, well, um, I moved to Dubuque when I was just fifteen years old, and that was back in nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, I believe. And I attended Dubuque Community School District here, I attended Senior High School. And I faced a lot of challenges during my educational experience with, you know, being a child coming from a single parent home. And also being a teen mother, I was sixteen years old, now I became pregnant with my daughter. So I faced many challenges, not only from those aspects, but also from being, you know, one of the maybe ten or fifteen black children that were attending the school at the time. It was pretty hard with all of those things going on and then facing that for me to focus on my education, so I kind of fell behind and ended up facing, you know, not me, facing the fact that I may not admit was gonna, may not was gonna graduate. However, there was teachers who were really compassionate and believed in me, actually was a counselor at Senior High School, who approached me when she realized I was having a lot of problems and she asked me to attend Central High School, which there I was introduced to a team of teachers who were just, all of them were compassionate and all of them saw something in me that I didn't see in myself, which gave me opportunities to become a leader and to be a part of like some major projects, the Tuskegee Airmen Project, I was a part of that and Paul Tibbetts, I was a main part of that, I was able to lead those projects, I was always the one speaking to the newscast and they really made me, they built my confidence up and they made me feel like I could be someone and that to me is important. So as far as teachers, in my, in my, I'm sorry, in my opinion, teachers are very important and I want to be able to support teachers who are like that so that students can experience what I experienced and, and have that hope that I received because of the teachers that I experienced at the time. During my journey here in Dubuque, I have, I had a lot of issues that I faced as far as housing, as far as just struggling with poverty and being in situations where I didn't feel like I was gonna be able to, to make it and succeed in life. So, so even though I was able to succeed in school, I still had a lot of problems to face in life, being a single parent myself and being a black woman in the community. I began to work at Hillcrest Family Services later on in life, working with children with adverse childhood experiences, I was able to connect with those children, be their safe person to, to come to when they needed someone, I was understanding because I've known, I, I'm sorry, I, I understand how it feels to have those adverse childhood experiences because I had those in my life, so I could understand where they were coming from, so I was able to come from a place where they were, they felt safe because they felt like I was a person who could understand them, I was a person who would give them a chance and not judge them because of what they're doing and what they're going through, but understand why they're doing what they're doing and why they're going through what they're going through. So that experience really helped me out a lot with understanding that I do wanna work with kids and I do wanna help kids because I was that child and if I didn't have that, I wouldn't be where I am today. During the George Floyd, the, the George Floyd event, when the world was kind of shaken up about, you know, what happened and, and everybody's eyes were really open to like what, you know, minorities face when it comes to police brutality, when it comes to inequities in school systems and the judi- judicals, I'm sorry, in the, you know, criminal justice system and, and, you know, the housing system, all of that just came out from that one incident in my eyes, it opened a lot of people's eyes and, and also opened mine as well because it made me feel like I need to do something, I can't just stand here and not say anything. So that's where my leadership in Dubuque, in the Dubuque community came from, I knew that I need to stand up and be a voice, so me and a couple of friends got together and we, we organized a couple of really peaceful protests with a lot of really good turnouts, I mean, hundreds of people were at the protest and it was something, excuse me, that we kind of didn't know what we were getting, we were getting ourselves into, but we knew that it was just the right thing to do. And from there, we organized Switching Places Foundations and the Queens for Peace is a, is within that organization and the reason why we say Queens for Peace is because we want to promote peace, but we also want to educate the community about equity and inclusion and about what we can do as community members to make sure that we're all doing our part. And it really, it turned out really well, so, um, Switching Places, basically, the name came from basically building empathy within our community, between communities, between different communities, creating a understanding to be able to come to a common ground so that we can do the right thing and start doing what's right so that we can make changes because Dubuque, Dubuque is a really good place to live in, it really is, there's really good people here. I just feel like that once we can understand other people's situations and what they go through, then we can all come together and fix what we have going on, which is inequity, I'm sorry, equity, inclusion, just like all the disparities that the black community has faced through the years.
Okay, great. And do you have, have kids that are in the Dubuque school system now?
Yes, um, remember I told y'all I was sixteen when I had my daughter, well, she actually, despite of her situation, because we, I mean, we had a lot of bad situations like, and it just was what it was, you know, I'm a single parent, there's really not much I could do when I was a young parent, you know? But she did graduate from Senior High School with honors and she also went on to receive a full scholarship for academic success at Senior. She went to Iowa State University and she also graduated from there, she was on the dean list, dean's list twice, she graduated, her degree is in psychology and she graduated from that school, so that's one success story I have from, you know, having children in the community. I have a son who goes to Alternative Learning Center due to COVID, he fell behind in his schoolwork and he learns differently like his mother and he, so we decided the best thing for him was to finish his year out at ALC because he would have graduated last year, but now he, you know, like I said, he fell behind, so he'll be graduating this year and he's a student there, he attended Lincoln's School, he attended Prescott and he attended Washington. I have a nine-year-old, I meant, sorry, I call him nine, he's not nine, he's eleven, I have an eleven-year-old son who is at Washington Junior High School this year and he was at Prescott last year and he also attended Lincoln at one point in time too. And then I have my baby, who's six, and he goes to Prescott. So I have, I'm well invested in the Dubuque community schools and I, you know, I have a good relationship with teachers and some principals, I try to be as directly involved, as directly involved as I can in my children's education. So, yeah.
Okay, and, and talk a little bit about, do you see that work that you did when it was switching places and kind of the community organization and, and taking that leadership role and inequity? In what way, or do you think that, that service on the school board would be an extension of some of those sort of core values that, that drove you into that kind of activism?
Absolutely, the school board to me is my next steps. So I always, you know, it was like, okay, we can organize these protests, we can get people together, we can have these conversations, but I'm like, what can I do to change, to, to be that change, to make sure that change is really happening, that we're not just, we're going beyond the conversation now and we're, and I'm not just discussing and creating events, like now, going up to the school board would be like hands-on with me being able to connect community, I'm sorry, connect parents to teachers, you know, when teachers are having problems with, you know, reaching out to some of these parents who aren't really trusting the school system, who, you know, feel like the way I felt when I was a single parent and, and I struggled and I didn't really wanna speak to the schools because I didn't, I was embarrassed about my situation, you know, it's, I feel like I will be able to, to be that connection so that we can fill those gaps, those achievement gaps and really work on it and we, you know, we have roundtable discussions about what we can do for people who are facing these challenges, but we really need to ask the people what we can do for them, to help them with these challenges, we can't, you know, just assume what we can do. I mean, we can collect data and all that, but I think the best way to collect the data is straight from the person is to go directly to the source.
And when you talked about, you know, your son struggling with the pandemic and all, how, how do you feel the, the school district and the school board? What, how, how do you think there, would you rate kind of how things went during the pandemic, what could have been better, what did they, you know, get right?
Well, that was just a really pressured situation, I mean, they came out of the nowhere, I feel like the, the school board did what they could with the tools that they had, it was just, I mean, we were all, you know, no one knew what was gonna happen next and so how could we expect the school board to, to automatically know what to do, but I think they did a really good job with trying to step in and, and get all the students, you know, devices, electronic devices. The teacher sent me home lesson plans and, and ideas to help me be able to teach my son at home if I was able to do that. So I believe that the school board did a great job with, with trying to make sure that they can do whatever they could with the tools that they had, I mean, they even want, you know, help with food and, and, I mean, it was, it was really amazing to see a community come together, I mean, it was a bad situation, but it was amazing to see, you know, the good people that we have in this community and see us come together to try to help each other out, it was a great, great feeling.
And do you feel like the district is doing enough now to help kids who did fall behind to get caught up, or do you think there needs to be more done there?
Only going off just my situation, I, I haven't really spoken with any parents about what they feel, but for me, for my son, I feel like they are doing what's going on with him, they're doing everything that he, they can, they're giving him the tools that he needs, they're ensuring that he graduates and, and gets his degree, so I feel like these teachers, especially the teachers there, they're doing a wonderful job with, with, with trying to make sure these kids are getting the best education with, you know, despite the circumstances that are going on.
Okay, thanks.
Erica, excuse me, part of that, you talk about filling that achievement gap and it seems like we're hearing from a lot of people this, this discussion about brain health in the school and different ideas kind of floating around on, on how to help kids with that, I just wanted to ask if that's a priority for you and, and if it is, do you have any specific ideas on how you'd like to improve the brain health within schools?
Brain health is definitely a priority, it is a direct, you know, that it goes hand in hand with the child's succeeding in their education, if they don't have brain health, then they're not gonna be able to succeed, so it's very important to address those issues and it's very important to, to try to have intervention, things in place besides punishment in my eyes, I feel like having more social workers in the schools, getting count, well, getting social workers in the schools, getting counselors in the schools, getting teachers more hands-on help, like hiring more paras and paying better wages so that we can keep those paras there to be able to help the teachers deal with the behavioral issues. Intervention is, is, is key, you know, get, get some specialists in the school that, that specialize in de-escalation and hire people who can be safe people for children who don't feel safe enough to talk to their teachers about how they feel. I actually was talking with my organization and some other people about creating this job called a safe person in the schools so that these kids can have someone that looks like them, you know, where you don't need to necessarily have a degree to do this, but you have to have some experience and, and, and have someone who can be there for these children to talk to and say, hey, this is what I have going on, because with my experience in working at Hillcrest, if children with adverse childish, childhood experiences do not trust you, they will not open up to you and if they won't open up to you, then they will not be able to, to deal with the underlying issue and the underlying issue is what's causing them to behave in school and have these issues with teachers and, and other students.
All right, I'm gonna jump in just kind of off that, so, in response to that, some of the things you said, you know, you talked about adding more paras, better wages and stuff, I guess I'm just kind of curious, taking a step back, what do you think kind of the school district's financial situation is? Every year, you know, district leaders talk about state funding and state funding not being adequate, obviously there's a big influx of funding now related to the, the coronavirus pandemic, but if we're looking at potentially adding some of these positions, how does that kind of fit in the overall budget picture, how do you think school leaders are handling the money they do have?
I don't know how they're handling the money, I don't have the information, I will admit that, however, state fund, I do know that we are underfunded and it's obvious, so yes, we need to ask for more money, we need more funds, our children are worth it, you know, we need to get this, we need to go to this, to the state legislators and the state representatives and they, and we need to demand that they fight for more funding for our schools because our schools are in need and our kids are in need because we have too many kids that are falling behind and that's just not okay and we can help that if we fill these gaps by adding, adding these positions and giving these teachers relief so that they can focus on educating their students.
Kind of following up on that, Derek, are there any programs that you, I think some of the, the, the school district money that they've gotten from pandemic has been used for some maybe temporary programs, are there any programs that you are aware of that you think are especially good and ought to be continued after the pandemic money that runs out with regular funding?
Um, actually, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm not familiar with any programs besides like maybe the food programs that they're doing, I feel like that's a great thing with making sure these kid, our kids are fed and I think that we should continue to do that, but I do know that the schools, you know, did, used to send on the little backpack lunches before the pandemic, however, now during the pandemic, they're sending home more like healthier foods, foods that are more, that children and parents are gonna eat, the other stuff was like not as, you know, good, I'm, I'm not even gonna like lie about that, but you know what I mean, so the food has gotten better and they're really more mindful about what they're sending, like meat now and, you know, bananas and, and fresh fruit and things that can be cooked at home, not like packaged canned stuff that you throw in a microwave, so that, I, I, I like, I would like to see more of that, I would like to see that continue with the funding there, there, as far as there. There was another part of the question I think I missed, did I answer the full question for you?
Yeah, I think so, just I was, you know, specifically asking about those, any programs, you know, that you, that are being funded on a temporary basis that need to be continued and, and maybe also specifically to, you know, some of the discrepancies or shortfalls that you identified with regard to, you know, children, adverse childhood experiences and trying to, you know, mitigate some of those in the educational environment?
Yeah, um, I feel like, yeah, we need to, I don't know if there's any funding especially for that from the pandemic. I do know that there's something with like internet, that they were helping with some families with internet, I believe, I believe that was, that's a great, that's a great tool to have, I believe that children need wifi in their homes with the pandemic and without the pandemic because a lot of things are done online now and a lot of homework, you know, is, it's easier to access things, you know, we're communicating and everything is done through, you know, online, so I think that we should continue with helping out with families who need wifi also, because that would actually help with filling the gaps, you know?
Sure, thanks.
Uh, one thing that the school board has talked about quite a bit is the, the facilities, the school buildings themselves and kind of runs the, the gamut from some nice new schools to some very old schools and they, I don't know if you have looked at, at all, there's some, been some discussion of a plan to consolidate schools, like can go to two middle schools instead of three to save money, those kinds of things. And, and then also the fact that a lot of the schools, there's a number of schools that are still not air-conditioned and I don't know where you think those things fall as a priority?
Um, I would love to gather more information on the facilities coming together, I just, I can't really just make a decision off and I don't have enough information about that. I would like to hear what teachers have to say about that, I would like to hear what the educators and the people who are working in the schools, what they, how they feel about that. As far as air conditioning, I believe that all the schools should be air-conditioned and it should be prioritized, I mean, kids are losing hours of school because of excessive heat and that is, we already have these achievement gaps, that's not doing nothing but making those back gaps grow further apart and our children are falling even more behind because they cannot concentrate on their schoolwork if they're hot, teachers cannot concentrate on teaching the class if it's, if it's really hot in the classroom or they have really irritable kids who are not thinking about anything, but oh my gosh, it's so hot in here, so I feel like air conditioning should be a priority and all of our kids should have air conditionings in the schools.
I'm gonna jump back in here, so I'm just kind of curious, Erica, as you're, as you're campaigning and, and you know, you threw your hat in the ring, what, what's your kind of process, I mean, how are you going about getting the word out about yourself, what are you telling folks about you that, you know, would make them want to support you, you know, we got kind of a crowded field of people running for these seats, I'm also kind of curious what you're hearing from them that's, you know, about the state of the schools?
Well, I have an avid campaign and I have people who help me come over and we make phone calls and I have put yard sign, I had made over a hundred and fifty yard signs which ended up running out and a lot of people wanted them and I actually didn't even have enough to fill the yards of the people who did want them. I am known for my work in the community, so a lot of people know that I come from a very compassionate and understanding standpoint and they know that I will bring that to the school board, they know that I am going to have the best interest in our students, for our students and our teachers and our parents, they know that I am a very understanding person and I'm a person who can be a bridge between teachers and parents and I can be that person who can help our parents understand the very importance of being directly involved in their children's education. I've created a Facebook page and I have over seven hundred and sixty-four followers and I get a lot of feedback from teachers alone who tell me like, hey, I feel like, you know, I can call, come to you and tell you, I feel like you're gonna help. I have one teacher that works at Prescott School who strongly recommends me to be on the school board, so I do have the connection with teachers also due to the fact of me having the work in the community that I have, some of the teachers were a part of that, also because I'm directly involved in my children's education, you know, I, my kids aren't perfect by me, any means and my son, sometimes I have to go down to the school for him, but I go, you know, when they call me, I go right down there and I think the principal and the teachers really appreciate that, but I'm able to do that, some people aren't able to do that, you know?
Derek, I know one of the things that's been a little bit more, I guess I'd say contentious lately is the discussion on masks in schools, do you have a position on that personally and, or an opinion on how the, the current board has handled that question?
The, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't like wearing a mask, my, my loving girl son absolutely hates it, mom, why do we have to wear masks, I don't like it, I don't like it, but it's not about me, it's not about him, it's about other people, it's about other students who are at risk of, of not being able to come to school because of their underlying health conditions and being at higher risk of, of dying from COVID. It's about parents who are worried about sending their kids to school. The Center for Disease Control gives us preventable measures to stop the spread of COVID, one, social distancing, we cannot social distance in the schools because the classrooms are crowded. You know, washing hands and using hand sanitizer consistently, how can a teacher with twenty kids, twenty six-year-olds make sure that those kids are consistently washing their hands? I feel like the masks is one of the easiest preventable measures to do, you know, you can wear it while you're in school, you can take it off if you're, you know, at, in gym and running, but wear it, you know, just to help prevent the spread of COVID. I agree with the mask mandate during the time that COVID is at its peak or when we are at risk of spreading it. I do, however, feel like there are some exceptions for children with asthma or health issues who, you know, if they can't wear it, then that's just one or two children without the mask, it's not a whole entire school. So where I stand at with that, I'm saying just put the mask on just so everybody can have a fair chance at an education and take it off when you get home from school, if you have health issues where you, you know, you can't wear it, then, then, you know, let's have the medical person say you can't wear it, you have your, you, you have your proof that you can't wear the mask and just, they don't, you know, it's, to me, it's just more simple than we're making it and, like I said, I don't even wanna wear the mask, but hey, if I go in the store and they say you have to wear it, yeah, I'm gonna put it on, if I go to the courthouse and they say you have to wear the mask, I'm gonna put it on, it's just, to me, I just feel like it's just the right thing to do, I feel like we should always be making our decisions and doing the right thing and to me, the right thing to do was, would be wear a mask.
How did you, how did, what did you think about the, the school district's sort of compromise that they came to, to say, well, we'll, we'll put the masks on when it gets to a certain level and a certain, in, in a specific building?
I commend the school district because I feel like what they did was they came to a common ground, they said, hey, if we can't do nothing, we're gonna, I mean, we rather do something than nothing, so if we can't get, you know, everyone to agree on at least masking up now to prevent the spread, let's say, okay, well, when the numbers get this level, once the numbers get this level, then there's gonna, we, we're gonna need a mask up, so I, I really appreciate the fact that, you know, we were able to come to a common ground and we were able to, to make that decision. However, in my opinion, I feel like we should be preventing, we should not be waiting for things to happen before we decide to step in and then prevent, because then, to me, we're not preventing at that point.
One more question, I think for me, Erica, and that would be, and I think, you know, Dustin sort of touched on it, that, you know, how it was, you know, it's with a crowded field, you know, going after a number of, of, of seats, you know, what do you feel differentiates you and separates you from, from the other options that voters will have here in a few weeks?
The difference between me and other candidates is I am a person who has lived it, experienced, who has lived the experiences of the people, of the children that they're trying to help and the, and the parents of those children, I can directly relate to them, I can bring to the board issues that they never would have known about if I wasn't on the board, for instance, a transportation issue, you know, transportation is a huge barrier and I don't even think our school district even really understands it, how big and huge of a barrier that it actually is, you know, we talk about the, the disparities in the achievement gaps, the transportation has a lot to do with it, some kids aren't going to school all because their moms don't have cars and two miles is a very long way when you have to walk up a big hill and it's freezing cold outside and then there's parents who have younger children who can't, who don't wanna bring their, their baby outside to walk their other, the, the two-year-old or the second grader to school, because you can't send a second grader- Cause you can't send the second grader to school and walk mom on their own. But I'm actually seeing some of that happening. I'm seeing some little kids walking by themselves that shouldn't be walking. So these are things, the things that I see, I, I believe the other school members, they don't get, they don't see that stuff because where they live and the lives that they live. And I do, and I understand. So I will be able to bring a viewpoint that others just can't. They just can't.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Uh, that transportation issue you mentioned, uh, is something that, uh, if, I think we've heard maybe one other candidate talk about, but, um, kind of curious, you know, specifically in that situation, uh, if you're elected to the school board, what, what kind of, how would you go about, you know, maybe affecting change there? And, and what would be, what, your kind of, uh, solution or, or what kind of changes do you think should be made?
Well, I do know that, um, you know, we're underfunded, so trying to add bus routes and stuff may be another funding issue. But we have partnerships and like, we have like the Dream Center, you know, that we can ask them to partner with us and say, hey, you guys have a lot of vans. Is there any way you guys would like to, to help out with getting kids to school? I'm pretty sure the Dream Center wouldn't have any problem with doing that. Um, we have like the Black Men's Coalition, we have parents, you know, there's so many good people in Dubuque that would probably be willing to pick kids up on their way to school, like a carpool, um, program, something like that. Um, you know, there's, there's so many creative ways that we can help out with transportation without digging in the budget. And, um, and I know that I would be able to bring that to the school board, like, hey, let's talk to the Dream Center. I know the people at the Dream Center, let's go down and, and, and have a discussion with them and see if they're willing to help us. Because this is a problem. It's a, it's an issue. And I know that from firsthand experience, being a single mother, like when I say that, I'm saying that from lived experience. Saying that from my daughter telling me that when she went to Washington and I made her late to school because I had to get a baby ready in the morning before I got her ready to get out there, that she got a detention almost every day. Because I made her late to school. You know, there's another problem that a lot of people don't see. You know, that's taking kids' confidence away. That's taking their, she's, she's really good in ac, in her academic success, but that's kind of like taking her confidence away. That's making her feel smaller than a person. It's making her feel like she can't, she's not achieving. Nothing or that she's bad and it's not her fault that while she's, while she was going to school late. You know, like, those, those are things that I can bring to the attention of the school board members or to the schools even.
Wha- what do you think, um, might be the most difficult thing for you personally? If you, if you were, I mean, there's a learning curve, obviously, getting, getting onto a, a, a new, an elected position. Uh, what do you think might be the most challenging part of that for you?
Just knowing how important the job is and wanting to make sure that I'm doing the right thing and making the right decisions. That's gonna be the most difficult thing, um, because like, you know, our, these, the students are in our hands, basically, and these teachers. And so I wanna be able to make the best decision as possible. And, and that's, you know, that's something that is gonna work on my brain, you know? I'm gonna be like, it's gonna take a lot, but I'm willing to do that. Because I know that at the end of the day, I'm going to make the best decision for the best interest of our students and teachers.
Do you think you would be someone that tries to, uh, communicate? Get, get the responses of, of other parents and, and, uh, get a lot of input, uh, when you're making a decision? Are you more go with your gut kind of person?
I want to know what first the teachers think. Because they are the most important people besides the parent, next to the parents in our children's lives when it comes to education. Um, so I really would definitely need to get any input from teachers that are willing to give me their input. Also, yes, parents too, because parents are the ones who have to get our kids to school. They're the ones who have to, you know, work around their work schedules. They're the ones who have to, you know, face struggles with, you know, education, educating our children. And, and so I would need input from parents as well as teachers for my decisions. In my opinion, I think everyone should be doing that.
Do you feel like, um, school board members in the past, uh, that you, your viewpoint or viewpoint of, of friends of yours has been heard by school board members?
I don't necessarily know, because I've never even came to the school board about anything. It was never something that was in my, uh, I guess, I didn't know about. I mean, I knew about it, but it was, I didn't know it was a tool that I can use to, to help advocate for my kids. I mean, I would have came to the school board for a lot of things if I would have known that I really actually could do that. And when my daughter was getting bullied in school and, uh, the teachers weren't, well, the principal and were, they weren't really doing enough about it to me. Um, so I really, I don't really have the answers to that question. Um, I believe that, I would want to believe that they, that they do everything in there that they can to help out with parents with, you know, issues that are coming and, and teachers coming with issues. I, I would hope and think that, you know, the school board is doing everything that they can to make the best decision that they can based off of what they have.
Is there, is there anything else, uh, that, that you'd like to, to bring to our attention that maybe we didn't ask about? Or any other issues that are kind of on your mind?
Um, no, I just think that, um, I just wanna thank you guys actually for having me, one. And, uh, two, um, uh, yeah, I just, I feel like my leadership, um, in the community, um, my lived experience in the community, um, me being a parent, me being, coming from poverty and experiencing that and, and knowing how it is, I think that all those things put together would make me the best candidate for the school board.
Okay, well, we really appreciate your time and, uh, appreciate you putting yourself out there, uh, to run. Um, you know, it's, it's great to see so many people interested in serving our schools and, uh, and happy to, to, that, that you stepped up for that. So, thank you for that. Good luck the rest of the way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good day, guys.